This is the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board meeting with the two candidates who are running for Oviedo City Council in Group One. Judith Dolores Smith is the incumbent and Natalie Tuchert is the challenger. Did I say your last name correctly, Ms. Tuchert?
You did.
Good, thanks. Your pronunciation on your website helped. Thanks both. Could you take a minute to just introduce yourselves and say what you would like about background or anything else, just by way of letting us and viewers know a little bit about you?
I first.
We'll start with you, Ms. Smith, yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Judith Dolores Smith. I'm presently serving on Oviedo City Council since December 2019. I ran for three times prior to that, starting in 2009. My family has, my maternal grandfather came to the area in about 1900 and my father's family came in about 1920, so we've been in the area for quite a while. I am married, my husband John R. Jones, we've been married since 1975, and had quite a few businesses, served in a capacity of, I'm sorry, social services for a number of years, and then the author of four books, and presently serving on two nonprofit agencies locally. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Tuchert, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. So hello, I'm Natalie Tuchert. I'm running for Oviedo City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss how I can help Oviedo. So Oviedo is a great place to live. It's been growing at astounding pace. Twenty-five percent of our population has moved here in the past 10 years. So we've gone from 30,000 people to 40,000 people, and this is causing some growing pains. So I'm an engineer. I have the technical experience to assess the impact of this growth and contribute to making sure we maintain and grow our infrastructure to support the increased developments. You know, all healthy cities grow, but it's my opinion as a responsibility of the city council to make sure our growth is controlled growth. We need to make sure that Oviedo doesn't end up as one giant traffic jam. City council needs to understand what is happening and needs to be proactive. So we're ready and we're building our ground on a solid foundation and infrastructure. A main driver for why I'm running is because we need to be adapting and changing as the city is changing. As far as I'm aware, my opponent has not brought a single initiative to the city since being in office. To me, that's unacceptable. I will not just show up. I will advocate and take action. And while I support the city council's prior approach of hiring outsourced experts to study various growth impacts, I do not support the current city council's approach to just accept the conclusion of these external parties. Right now, if you build an Oviedo, an external company does a traffic report, an external company does an environmental report, and when the city gets these reports, an external company says if the impacts are acceptable. You know, these experts are, they're awesome, they're intelligent, but they're making recommendations based off of one project at a time. And from the city's point of view, each project is a drop in the bucket, and the reality is our buckets are getting kind of full. We need to make sure we're asking the right questions. So the whole picture is being addressed and not just the individual project at hand. The result of not doing this can be experienced pretty much any day of the week, sitting in the traffic congestion on Mitchell-Hamick Road. So let's look at the whole bucket. And we also need to make sure new development has its infrastructure built concurrently or before the new development is built, so current taxpayers aren't footing what should be developed goals. On a community level, we also have to take care of the changing needs of our town and our citizens. City council's done a great job developing our parks, our activities, and making sure the middle 50% of our constituents have their needs addressed, but they've not been listening to people who help and have been asking. We need to take care of our elderly. They make up more than 10% of our population, more than 1 in 10, and they've been asking for a senior center for as long as I can remember, and it's just been scooted down the road and brushed off indefinitely. Our current budget strategic plan, non-committed, says maybe.
Can I interrupt one quick second?
Sure.
I appreciate all of this, and we'll get into some of these issues. So if we, maybe if we could just move along, and then I think some of these things you're talking about will fit into some of our questions.
Okay, wrap it up.
That's right. I wanted to ask you each, you know, in municipal elections, I think a lot of times people are, they're not partisan, so people a lot of times can't make an easy pick based on their party. So they're looking for differences between candidates. Could you, could you highlight maybe a couple of philosophical or policy differences that you believe are things that voters should, should know about in this election? And Ms. Tuchert, if you could go first, then Ms. Smith, we'll have you, have you go next.
Thank you.
Sure. So you know, kind of what I'm saying is, is we have a ton of growth in the city, and it's, and it's pretty uncontrolled. There are, the ordinance codes that we have, there's a way to follow them to make sure that we can control this growth. So we have it spelled out, and we just need to make sure we're following it and make sure we're vetting things the right way. So like I'm saying, we're exporting a lot of these studies, and when it comes back to the council, they're, they're accepting the experts' views, but we really need them to look at the whole picture of the city and how it's affecting us at large. We need to make sure we have our infrastructure going in at the same time. So I mean, a big difference, I'm an engineer. I have been trained on how to approach problems in a strategic way and take in all the information I can get and make sure we are tackling issues from top to bottom. I've lived here over 20 years, like Judith, I love this city. We've lived here a long time. I've got four generations in town, and I really just want to make sure Oviedo's a place that, you know, I can be proud of growing my sons up in.
Okay. Ms. Smith, if you could go next, and I should say, I think we've lost your video again.
Yes, and I tried to, and I don't want to reboot it, so if you don't mind.
Okay, if it's all right with you.
It's fine with me. Yes.
Okay. So if you would like to go ahead and maybe highlight a couple of differences between yourself and your opponent, so that that would help people to make a decision at the ballot box?
Well, I'd probably like to start from the fact that when I grew up here, was growing up here, there were 2,000 people here. What brought us to the situation where we are now, where we are maybe a bedroom community of Orlando as opposed to a citrus community, is that we had freezes, and the freezes killed all of the crop, and therefore there was land to be had here, and you have to do something with the land. And so development started at that point. We've got many housing developments, and also probably the, the impetus was on developing housing, single-family homes. So that's where we are here in a nutshell. What, what we need to concentrate on now is developing our business end of it, because the single-family homeowners are going to be bearing the brunt of the tax bill. And so as I see it now, we can't go back and undo what happened in the past, and it happened because again, of things beyond our control, the freeze. And so what is, what has happened now is that we have to kind of pivot and decide what's going to be best for the community and also in making sure that our single-family homeowners are not overly burdened by the taxes needed in order to maintain our infrastructure. So I think we're in a new era of Oviedo, as a, and the new era is developing a new tax base that will sustain what we have now, that will also maintain our infrastructure and move forward.
Okay. If I could quickly follow up with you, you've been in office for a couple of years now. I wonder if you could maybe briefly discuss what you've done in that time to reach the goals that you just mentioned of expanding a tax base and, and not being so reliant on rooftops.
Yes.
For growth.
Yes. When I first came in, again, I looked at what we had, and I compared it to some of the other local cities and what they had going on, and one particular city, again, their, most of their budget was from commercial. And then I discovered that, again, we were dependent on single-family home tax base in order to bring in the revenue we needed. So I immediately started looking around to see what can we do to broaden that base. And one of the things I found out is that we have a simulation industry here that brings in billions of dollars, but we hadn't been maybe going after that as much as we should. Also, one of the areas that, that's going to be developed is the mall. That's probably one of the areas that has the best potential. Again, looking at that and see how we can meld all that together, the simulation industry and producing other tax bases, again, that would not be a burden on the single-family homeowners. So that's one of the things I've been trying to do.
I may be getting into an area of repetition here, but I was wondering if each of you could talk about what you think is the number one issue that Oviedo is grappling with right now. I suspect we may get back into growth, so maybe your answers will be brief, but just give each of you a chance to mention that. Ms. Smith, could you go first?
I, I don't want to sound too Pollyannaish, but Oviedo, given what we started with, as I said, a community of 2,000 depended on citrus, and then losing that and going to tax base with single-family homes, we, we are doing, we are doing great. Our community is thriving. Yes, from someone who's been here when there was no traffic, sure, I would have loved to have kept it as a rural community, but again, that was not to be the case. And so we move forward as smartly as we can, knowing that, yes, we're going to have growth, but we try and manage it smartly. So I do see us not as a, again, and let me throw this in there too. When I was running for election, the, everybody was saying, oh, the traffic, the traffic, the traffic. What happens? COVID. Then suddenly, people start working from home. And I really believe that in the future, that people are going to be working from home, and that will solve some of our traffic issues. And I've seen that in my own life, where my husband used to work outside the home, but now his company is allowing him to work inside of our home. So again, I believe COVID has taken us in a new direction, and that will take us in directions that we can't possibly imagine.
Okay. Ms. Tuchert, what do you see as the number one issue that Oviedo is coping with right now?
You know, I, I agree with Judith a lot here. Our overgrowth and uncontrolled growth is, is a lot. You know, I, I, I agree that we need to be bringing in the simulation industry. It's huge. I work over at Siemens Energy, I work around all these companies. They do bring in a good tax base, and we do bring in almost $16 million primarily off of just our single-town homes, and that is our big tax base. We do need to increase it. I'm with you on that. I didn't catch where she said what she, she did to bring those companies in. We do need to bring them in. And with COVID, yes, we've decreased some traffic on the roads, but I was on the road two days ago, and it's still COVID, and they're still packed. We need to address infrastructure, and we need to address it as we're putting new builds in. And that's what I'm talking about with really vetting new things coming into the city. We need to bring in companies, not just talk about bringing them in, actually bring them in. Oviedo's had initiatives, it's even on their websites about bringing in medical and kind of STEM industry-type jobs in the community. We have UCF right down the street, and we really, really need to harp on that. They've got business incubators galore. Let's bring some of those incubators into Oviedo. Make their home here to start, and they'll stay, and they'll add to our tax base. So yeah, growth's a huge one for sure. We, we have new members of Oviedo, we welcome them, we've got an awesome town, we're one of the top places to live in the country, but that has some growing pains, and I do think that is our biggest issue.
I'd like to just pose one more growth-related question, then I, you know, maybe my colleagues will have a question or two, but I'd like to, if you could be fairly specific about this. One of the issues that Seminole County is facing is the threat to the rural boundary, the rural area, and one of the ways it's been discussed of getting around that by developers is to simply annex into other cities and get those cities to change, to change their designation. Now, I think that would require a legislative act right now. In fact, there was a bill that was in the legislature last year that would have allowed cities, basically when they annex, to override the rural boundary. So I'm sorry for asking such a long-winded question, but my question is, do you support the city being able to annex and then change the land use for property that's currently subject to the rural boundary restrictions? Ms. Tuchert, I'd like you to answer first.
Sure. So no, the rural boundary has, you know, been one of the biggest controllers of growth here, simply because they can't put these high-density zoning, high-density development in there. I fully support the rural boundary, and yes, you're right, there is kind of this loophole that was, and you can do it now. It is, it is built into it. So if a parcel that surrounds the city that's in the rural boundary, they can go through the process of trying to get annexed into the city, so then the city can decide if they want to increase the density or not. Personally, there's not a lot of cases where I think we should be annexing property into the city. I don't think we should be touching that rural boundary. Now, there's a few instances in annexation in general. For example, there's neighborhoods that are around the outskirts of Oviedo, like Aloma Woods, Huntington. If they wanted to annex into the city because they practically already live here, the whole subdivision's built, they just want to voice in local government, I'm all about it. But if we're talking about taking a beautiful lot full of trees or something that's already designated agriculture, and, and the voters already voted, they want to keep the rural boundary. So I'm here to represent the voters, and, and they want to keep it there. I'm not, I'm not for allowing someone to come annex in a property into the city for the purpose of increasing density and building developments. That's just something I disagree with.
Okay. Ms. Smith, what about you?
Basically, the rural boundary is very dear to the voters, and it's dear to me that we keep the rural boundaries as is, and so I'm not open to discussing anything that would affect that.
Okay. So if a developer wanted to annex into Oviedo and then increase the density beyond what was allowed in the rural boundary, you would oppose that?
Let's say this, I would hear the argument, hear the legal argument for it if it is, as I'm bound to do as a member of council, but I am not for doing anything to the rural boundary that would go against what the citizens desire.
I just have a yes/no question for both of you, and I know that there are four possible amendments to the Oviedo charter that are, that are listed on the, on the ballot, if I'm correct. And I'd just like you both to, just with a simple yes/no answer, tell me how you are supporting those, those charter amendments. And Ms. Smith, I believe we'll, we'll talk, we'll start.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
First, you're, you're asking me how I support it personally? Because again, our committee came up with those, and as far as I'm concerned, it is the voter who needs to decide if they are for those changes that have been presented. I have personal opinions, yes, but I don't think that is something I should be putting out there. I think the voters should decide what they would like to see with those. So I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, yes, I have personal opinions about those, those amendments, but it's not like I would be influencing it or anything like that, but I sure enough don't want to do a yes or a no. Let the voters decide.
I understand. The, the reason for the question is, is just to sort of draw differences between the two of you, in, in terms of your personal opinions on these, on these amendments, so.
If I, I would, I would, again, if I give a personal opinion, it's almost like I'm, I'm trying to sway an opinion. I don't want to sway it. The committee decided that they wanted these changes there, and we said we would put it before the voters for them to decide. I have strong opinions on it, I can tell you that right now, but I think it would be inappropriate for me to voice those opinions right now.
All right. I understand, so I will, I'll put you down for that. Ms. Tuchert, tell me, tell me about your positions on these, if I can just run through them real quickly to, to explain them to the viewers. The first is about council members' term length, and how do you feel about that?
I think the term length is pretty, you know, nonpartisan there. We're just trying to get everybody on the same election cycle. I, I am of the mindset, the more people who can vote for whoever's on their council, the better, you know? So, so that's really the point of shifting that term limit so it's all in the same cycle. I don't really think that's a controversial issue. That one's pretty straightforward to me.
Great. Amendment two about updating debt financing.
I'm sorry, can you read it?
The, just from what I, from what I looked at it, amendment two seems to be about updating the financing of the debt.
Yeah. So they're, they're putting an amendment in there to raise the debt ceiling that the city can go in from $5 million to $10 million. I do have mixed feelings on it. I see the purpose of it. I can't say I've come up with a great yes or no on it yet. I definitely see the reason to need it. We are a big city, we have a large budget. Sometimes things happen, and we need to increase our deficit, so I see the reasoning for it. So if I had to vote right now, I'd probably say yes, but it's, it's not solid yet, I'm still thinking about it.
Number three, and a simple yes/no is fine, but number three is, is raising the number of signatures required on petitions to, to run for office.
Um, I would say no.
Okay. And number four seems that it changes the duties of the city manager in some ways.
Um, I don't want to put my opinion on there on that one.
Okay. Understand. Thank you much.
Yep.
I have a question, Mike. So both of you spoke about attracting simulation businesses to Oviedo, and that, that's something I think most cities would like to do. It's, it's competitive. So what would be your pitch to, or what should Oviedo's pitch be to a simulation company to locate in Oviedo? What would you provide them in way of incentives or just your sales pitch? Ms. Smith, we'll, we'll start with you.
Well, I met with members of the national simulation industry and came to find out there are several people that I know personally who are in simulation, and I asked them, what can we do then to bring you here? Now, when I was talking to some of them, they said that space may be an issue, but again, maybe not. And one of the, again, one of the places that there is space is at the mall. And so again, I was saying to them, what can we do? What can we do to work together? Because you're living here, there are a lot of people in the industry that are living here. What can we do? And so it's the question that I ask of the industry, trying to find out what would be a, something that would draw them here. And again, probably that what we're going to have to do as a city is determine where we have the space for them, if they need space, where's the best place for them to be located and go from there. But I have been having talks with, again, several people regarding this issue.
A quick follow-up, would you be in favor of offering tax incentives?
If that truly would bring them here, sure. I, I think that would be an appropriate thing, because again, what, the phase that we're in now as a city, we're no longer this city that had a lot of land and we're building houses, and no, we're in a phase right now where we don't want our single-family homeowners to be overburdened by the mon, the monies needed in order to maintain the infrastructure. Therefore, what is the most prudent way to get businesses here so that they can contribute to this, again, to helping us maintain the infrastructure?
Thank you. Ms. Tuchert, what would be your sales pitch to simulation company or any other business to get them to come to Oviedo? And, and would you include tax incentives as part of that pitch?
So, starting off with taxes, I would not include tax incentives as part of that pitch. The whole reason to bring them into Oviedo is to increase our tax base. You know, if we were to, you know, compromise on that, I would say a limited tax, like maybe a one-year tax, inspiring them to pull them into the city, but, but they should be paying their share. To bring them into the city, I think in the past, the reason we haven't gotten as much as we thought, we've gotten a lot of medical, we've gotten a lot of people who want to live here, we have a huge amount of people who work in STEM, who live in Oviedo and work elsewhere. So we already have people who want to establish businesses here. The big driver is, is just like Judith said, it's, we have, we don't have any room. So this has kind of been solved by COVID. A lot of places, including my place of work, have switched to some days in the office, some days at home, so now you have shared work environments, so you take up a lot less footprints. So the, the footprints of these large offices are, are now a lot more smaller, which, which opens a lot of opportunity for Oviedo. So you know, my, my pitch would be, your employees live here, let's build here. You have a great influx and a constant stream of solid, top-notch, educated employees you can hire right down the street. So yes, come li, come work, live, play in our city. We're a great place to live, and, and we're almost like if a, if a employer's trying to get someone to join their business, saying you're in Oviedo, I mean, we're helping them. So yeah, sales pitch, it's important, and, and we have all the stuff to sell it. We don't need to be doing tax incentives. We have the school right down the street, we've got the industry here, and people want to live here. And now that the footprints of these large offices have gotten smaller, they can fit in our city. So, so that's how I would sell it.
Okay. Thanks you both for the answer.
Yep.
We're running out of time. I'd like to ask you each one more question, if I may. Ms. Tuchert, I'll start with you. Can you think of a specific vote that the city council took in the last couple of years where you would have been, you would have opposed whatever the outcome was? Something, something they did that you disagreed with?
Ooh, there's a lot that's happened in two years. There, you know, I kind of, I, whenever I go to a city council meeting where I've attended online over the past couple of years, it's, it's not a single vote. Anytime they put a new build up, I just start my staff watch, and, and I stop it when they say, we've approved, and we move on to the next topic. And, and the last 10 times we've done it, it's all been under four minutes. I mean, you can go fact-check this, rewatching videos. So the biggest thing I disagree with is the lack of discussion. We need to discuss these new builds, we need to vet them, we need to make sure we're saying yes to something we understand. And, and we shouldn't be asking questions on what we're even talking about during the meeting. You need to do your research before the meeting, and then in the meeting, we need to say, okay, I had a question on this, I want to know the information before we approve it. So, so really, just anything we've approved, new build in the past several years, we need to spend more than five minutes on approving it. We need to discuss it.
Ms. Smith, a similar but different question for you. Have you, can you think of an instance where the council voted to do something or approve something where you were on the losing end of the vote and would have, would have done it another way?
Yes, and I'd like to apologize also for my video. I have no idea what happened.
It's okay.
Sorry. But one thing that happened recently, and I was concerned about it again, because we don't know the future. We try and predict as best as we can, but the old garbage dump, which I'm familiar with, that's on East Broadway, the company that's currently there wanted, wanted to buy it, and I was against selling it. I think initially, they were hoping to use parts of it for a park, I think the perimeter, and they were, and there was a roadway that was there to get from one end of the area, over in that area to another, so they, they wanted to keep that. But anyway, they wanted to sell it. And my thing was, why sell an asset when we are growing city? We don't know, even though it's an old dump, when we don't know what the future's going to bring, why sell an asset like that? They aren't making more land in the city limits that we have now. So I was quite opposed to it, and I expressed my opposition, not vehemently, but strongly, but I was outvoted.
Okay. Well, thank you. I want to thank you both for taking the time to talk to us, and we'd like to, like to wish you both the best of luck in the election.
Thank you. Thank you.